Hi there, Rhonda here with Rhonda Stusensworth. Welcome to the channel. Today is Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, and I am at the Glenwood, Arkansas City Council meeting. One of the items on tonight's agenda is opening bids for this here pickup truck.
Let's go over a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you this day and thank you for the opportunity to come out and try to do city work tonight and help us to do it to the best of our ability that you'd be proud of us these things are asking your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got his sheet after he can do your one?
Well, I'm gonna do the help call.
Okay.
Alan?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Jamie?
Here.
Johnny?
Here.
All right, minutes are October twenty-one, twenty-five. You'll have them in front of you.
Yeah, just go ahead.
And we're on the top, so.
I make the most improved the list is presented. I have a motion to attempt to minutes.
I'll second that.
Second by Chris. Go go.
Alan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing. Rhonda, if you've got that packet, that CD list, would you please take it out? I don't need that out in public. I don't think it's in there, it's not supposed to be, there's a CD.
There's the CD.
Do you wanna use this copy? Cause that one doesn't have all our slots for it either.
There she is. CD general fund.
Is this in there? That's got. I might look at the CD, though, there's no need for CD.
Do you wanna see, do you want this one to go around? Cause these don't have a slot for all to sign, this is just you and me.
Yeah, send it out and I'll resign in this time.
Oh wait, this one does.
Mine does, well, mine's got, mine's got you, Jason, and that's it.
Mine's, mine's all I've got.
So Alan and I are off to this, and Johnny.
Well, y'all get to sign on the side. Make sure y'all get them signed, Alan.
Now, we're all the hook, man. There's no ways.
Go ahead and sign somewhere and I'll tap the nine.
My goodness.
Everybody was into her, huh? It's just somebody's brother, he's taking it from the back.
By the way, the south side loans north side money when y'all ain't. Cause the body.
Are we getting it from that side, cause I'm broke?
The body is on the south side.
Oh.
You know all my name?
All right.
We'll get it, okay?
Is everybody, uh, looked at the financials for October?
I just, I just make sure the table of Jackson go over.
Just in case they need some.
Like, yeah.
This seem to be worked out well here? That's my motion.
I have a motion to table, uh, financials till next month.
Second.
To Jackson, go over.
I have a second.
Uh, I'll say.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Yes. And this is the title of where Mr. Jason's here, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, let's read you that. All right. I've gave y'all a projected, uh, proposed budget and it's rough and it's gonna need some work done on it. So that's all I had to present to y'all tonight. We'll go over it so we got some, can get some thinking going on and then we'll get the, uh, we'll get it ready to finalize. If y'all got anything that we need to change, I need to know about it before the next council meeting. So I'd like to approve it in December. But we'll run over it tonight to you, so you kind of, well, this is real quick and real rough. And, uh, if you look down on the, if you go down in there about a third or fourth sheet in there, if you look at payroll, to make the budget work, we're gonna have to drop that one, one position out of sanitation. So that will, that's in the budget right now, but it will come out. Position three, uh, would be the one except the eight seventy-seven seventy-nine that's there a month. We'll move up to that position two, but the rest of that salary will go away. And we'll take that out of sanitation, cause you can't make sanitation budget work with that in there. And then we still don't have a position. If you look up there, I'm gonna put, uh, I talked to Donna, and for right now, Sur, Donna's gonna run, work two to four hours a day, whatever it takes just to do the normal running to the sewer plant. Robert got his class two license today, or one day this week, and he's gotta go to one class for class three and take the test and Robert, they won't let him have his class three license, but he's gotta do that to have his class three. He said to come back, one check, one class, take the test, and pass it, and give him his class three. So, uh, but in Sur, Donna, and I talked to Robert, and we need to hire another person at Sur, but I want that person to do the maintenance and help, put the crew in maintenance. And what Donna is gonna agree to just work two to four hours a day, and she'll take care of the plant five days a week, and Robert or somebody else will come in and take it the other two days. So, but she's gonna take just a general overview of running the plant. She's not gonna do any maintenance, but she's not a full-time employee. And her salary there, you're not paying any other benefits with it, cause we not got insurance or anything with it. So. And I have talked to, in the budget, if you look at the salaries, these are not right, he did not fix these in waters, he did not fix Robert Howard's salary. I wanted to adjust those two boys to, uh, up a little, and then your son, when he gets both of his license, there's two licenses, two classes he's gotta take for sanitation. And I've told him I would give him a dollar an hour raise when he gets his two hours, two classes finished, not sanitation.
Animal control.
Animal control, I'll give him a dollar an hour, that's what he requested this year. And then when he gets his class three sewer license, if he gets those finished this year, he'd get another dollar an hour. I'm not letting, let's not give him one for every step he takes, he's gotta get a completed license.
Hey, just a side note, in case I forget, but, uh, right now, without just being, they know, it's all public anyway, but, right now, you got Mount Idaho in a mess, you just got Derrick's come out of a mess. Uh, lady went to jail over Derrick's. You got, uh, I named you about four or five municipalities that are right around Glenwood, and bottom line is transparency, we cannot have enough transparency, and I think we've done very well at being transparent, but, uh, the public's demanding transparency even more so than they were, and we have got to be very transparent as a city council. Uh, anyways, just throwing that out there for what it's worth. But there's some more people gonna go to jail in Mount Idaho, it looks like, like several, you know? And anyway, uh, it ain't good. And then Norman, the latest one, you got Norman, Derrick, Mount Idaho. Where was that other one, there was another one, right? Uh, well, you had the, uh, Mount, uh, was it severe, not severe, uh, Celine, Celine County situation over there, but anyways, y'all get my point. So I think we've done real well, but we're gonna have to even better.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir.
In the, if you look at the old pay and the new pay, you see those salaries? I gave a, the county gave a pull-in of three point eight percent pay raise, but the county employees didn't get any pay raise, because they were holding out their insurance. Uh, they were having to pay a part of their insurance, and then the insurance went up another hundred dollars. Ours went up a hundred dollars an employee, this year it's eight hundred and, our monthly insurance payment for employees, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents this year. That's up a hundred dollars from last year and it's up. So I gave, I put a two percent pay raise for everybody, except if you look at Robert and, uh, Howard. Think I got what's on salaries a little, and I think those need to be, especially Howard, needs to be adjusted a little more. But everybody else gets a two percent pay raise. And then since we hired Philip Cox, he's wanting to get his classes finished, and as he gets his classes finished, he could get, if you look at that position seven down there, I put, uh, eleven dollars an hour for twenty hours a week. That is to where I can, my budget will match if he gets a dollar an hour raise. I'm not hiring a position seven, I just put money in the budget to solve the pay raises as he gets license complete. Somebody else gets license complete, and other people get license completed. Now go and get your license complete, I'll give them the same dollar an hour. If, uh, new employees get license complete, then, uh, we'll give them more. But everybody's got a two percent pay raise, and if you look at that, you got a hundred dollars an employee roughly hit more in insurance. So we paid the insurance last year and the county took out of their salary, so the total three point eight percent, the county employees are gonna get the same tax home pay, they're not getting a raise, but they're getting a hundred percent of the insurance paid. We didn't drop back last year and make the employees pay the insurance, we gave the same rate as the county did, plus we paid the insurance. So two percent should be, plus the hundred dollars will match what the county's doing, except we'll be ahead of them by a hundred dollars an employee a month over what the county's paying this year, because of the way it's all worked out. Does that make any sense on the payroll? Have y'all got any questions on, that payroll has just flowed into the budget for those employees and what the department goes in, but I've got them broke out there so you can understand.
I don't know how we would actually do it, if it's even feasible to do, but one thing I have noticed sitting on this council the last several years is, uh, people get their license and then something don't go quite their way or something like that, and they get a better job offer, they're gone, and we've gotta start all over again.
I mean, usually, I like.
Well, I would like to see us at some point, if it was feasible and possible and popular, figure out some kind of way that, um, when a person got fully certified, that in two years or every year or third, three years, whatever, some kind of situation that would, they would get a flat check once a year or once every two years or something to stay on our team, to the cost money to train people and keep them and all that. And, uh, anyway, don't know that that's even feasible, but.
I'm trying to do that with a dollar an hour for each class. Like, if you get a class three license and Sur, you give them a dollar an hour and you get this, and you tell them to get pay raises every year, go and do something different than that. You do have a little money in the guys that's working in water.
What's the OC hours?
That's overtime.
Is that what they're giving, or you giving them?
If they work over, they're, those guys are averaging overtime.
That's their average right now?
Yes. That's a guess, yes. But I'll put overtime in, they're gonna get some overtime. I mean, just like the other night, all of us out at ten, we went home at eleven-thirty. I mean, I'm not gonna.
But by this manner, it's in the budget.
Yes. That's not saying I'm gonna give you fifteen hours a week of overtime.
That's correct, but it is budgeted.
It's, but whatever works out at the end of the year, that's about where it's, hopefully that's about where the overall average is gonna work out. So I put overtime hours in there, so it's not a surprise in the budget. But that's been in there ever since I've been mayor. If I ask the guy to work extra time, I don't, he's deserved money, he shouldn't have to work for free. Okay, is that enough? Y'all need to go home and look at his budget, and then we need to call and talk, and I need to get it right before, if there's something y'all see I messed up on it, tell me and I'll get the corrections made before the next council meeting, and then y'all can book, do the final approval in December, okay? And we'll go over the rest of this and I'll tell you where, so we can look at where we are. In the, the reason a general fund is gonna work this year and it's had a struggle the last couple of years, your interest on the money from your CDs is in there, and with the new court system agreement, the fine money, court money, we've been getting the fine money in city general. Comes back on the fine, but the court cost, we pay, we're paying twenty-five percent of the girl's salary down there. Murfreesboro pays twenty-five percent, county pays fifty. So your fine money, court money, I'll get it right in a minute. We get, they've got the fine money all along. Your court money is about four thousand dollars a month that we're bringing in, and Glenwood was getting three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred and sixty dollars of that.
Well, we're actually getting to keep a hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month.
But of that money now, as of the new law, and I haven't signed this because Murfreesboro don't wanna split that way, but I'm not signing it, but we're gonna get our fair share of the money this time. If you get, it's, it's roughly four thousand dollars a month. Take or give, some months it's a little less, some months it's a little more. And I put in the budget thirty-eight hundred dollars a month. So thirty-eight hundred dollars a month. Either, and I don't know how that's gonna come back yet, to me, the clerk that's got the dev, the department finance number should send the money in, not us. But of that four thousand dollars, say we got four thousand dollars a month, fifty percent of that eventually goes to the state. Murfreesboro has been keeping, we got, so two thousand dollars there. We get three hundred and sixty-five dollars of that, Murfreesboro been getting the rest of it. Same thing with the county, this ain't gonna fly anymore. So Murfreesboro's been getting twenty-five thousand dollars a year Glenwood's money for the police department, and that's coming back to us. And we're gonna get that since October, I'm not signing it, and I've got the agreement of the, the chief prosecutor, right?
Which one?
The prosecutors.
The prosecutor.
No, the judge.
The judge.
The judge has agreed, that, the new law says that's the way it's to be split. Argue about the old law, can't go back anyway. But we will be getting roughly twenty thousand dollars more, and that makes our budget in,
General fund.
In general fund balance, where we couldn't do it with the police department, leaving the police department as it is, the budget will balance with that two thousand dollars a month that's coming in. Now, some of that two thousand dollars a month, if we got anything left, that's got specific things that go far.
With the laws.
In, in the law, you've got certain things you gotta fund, you gotta fund the, you can fund your police cars with it, you can fund your, but all that's in the budget right now, and it'll just help us work through. And if we've got any reserves in general fund, I would suggest at the end of the year, we would put some of that money back for police car reserves. Cause we're gonna need a police car one of these days, but what we got now, our newest car's three years old.
Yeah.
So we're gonna need some police cars, we haven't seen any grants come through, but, uh, the budget won't fly much without, but, and if you look, so now then let's go into, I explained that, let's go into the budget. First thing you should see there is the general fund budget. If you look at, remember, we agreed on the percentage of the taxes going to, uh, each of the departments. The animal control got some, fire department got some, park got some, police got some, right? If you look at the budget that was there last year, those numbers from the way the money come in are adjusted back down just a little from the projected income. About ten thousand dollars, what should let animal control and sales tax was down just a little bit last year, so it would've been ninety-four, ninety-four seventy-five, that's breaking the same, that we had agreed upon, we told people it's gonna be the tax. I hope the, the numbers this month are backed up for the sales tax collection, but you didn't know, overall the year, some of that was, some of that money was down and some and some was. But, so those numbers are all there, animal control fees, uh, was down just a little bit. So in your budget, you see those numbers down, that's just working the same budget the way we've always worked it. And that's giving the same percentages of that sales tax that come from street. And you're gonna see street department struggling right now, because you took forty, when you took, uh, ten, twenty, thirty, you took sixty-five thousand dollars from your street fund to fund these things. So street funds start to struggle this year, okay? The street fund's struggling because you've got that, and that's one thing I need, y'all need to look at, we'll get over street in a minute. Right now, if you look at the general fund budget, it'll, it will, it's okay. We'll make, oh, it is barely okay, but it's okay. Five thirteen, and income was five thirty, with a ten percent reserve. So your total income in the general fund's five thirty, and your total expenditures is, uh, general fund's five thirteen, three sixty-three. It will, it flies. It flies because you got interest on your CDs that we hadn't had, and you've got that twenty thousand dollars that you hadn't had, okay? That's how, that's how it's working. And I would say at the end of the year, if you got any left, you need to take some of that money and put, I did not do it in fact, break down on what that money's supposed to go for, every fund. If there's any money left, you need to put it in vehicle reserve for the police department, okay? I'm probably gonna try to break this budget out for next year, maybe from last year. It used to be this way when I was on the council before, and Billy T put all this back in general fund. You need to see police department, fire department,
Atomized out.
Atomized out, and then just do a single line entry from the general fund into those accounts would be a lot easier for us to understand. Marriage in here, this marriage is not good, and I, I just didn't have time to do it. If you look at Lophy, if you look it up there, the Lophy fund for twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-four there, the beginning balance from the best we can tell, there's your twenty-five numbers, if you look at that first number, and then twenty-six. And I loved it trying to move some money that we're putting into Lophy for twenty-five thousand out of twenty, it won't work. You gotta be putting twenty-five in, cause right now our balance is twenty-seven thousand, one thirty-five, oh, one, and the ending balance next year, if we got everything figured right, is twenty thousand, one fifty-five, sixty-one, moving twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's, that should, that's, we need to hold that account equal. You don't need to take away from it, or don't need to add any more to it, or, but that's equal. And the police department's check withholdings there now, y'all's withholdings went up on Lophy. The, tell about y'all's check this year, it's up to what, three point?
It's three point five.
Three point five, I don't know if y'all noticed dropping your check, but it went from one point nine to three point five. So they pay a three point five percent contribution out of their check, and then the city pays the other seven, twenty-five, twenty-four percent. And that would be Lophy. Next one is street. And, uh, Mountain View project should be approved this year, we had it in the funds last year, and we did the, we did our withholdings from that, and the year before we did our withholdings from that, and that project is funded. I would like to go back in some of the reserve money and pull that money that we held out for that. That's the reason this budget won't fly in street. You can't absorb the twenty percent, you gotta get all in one year of budget, especially since we're taking sixty-five thousand away from it and putting in other budgets. But the, the paving grant is five hundred thousand dollars, this'll be the third year on it. We should get that this year, if we don't get that this year, we won't be paving this year, unless y'all take it out of reserve. And the five hundred thousand dollar Mountain View project is the grant money that's eighty-twenty, and we have to pay twenty percent of that, if you look at that, that's in there, six hundred thousand dollars, and eighty-eight thousand dollars engineering fees. That's what's eating your money up, and you won't be doing another one of those projects probably ever. But that sidewalk project, you get five hundred thousand dollars in grant, you're gonna spend six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. But if you make this budget work, you're gonna have to take something away from and or the money that we'd already put in reserve, put for that in the last two years' budget, let me move some of that out of the, cause that money don't roll over each year. And the project goes this year, you need to move it out of, you technically wouldn't have to move it, you got enough money, you don't have enough money with a ten percent reserve, but, so, however you wanna do it, the, the project will fund in budget, not in bu, it will fund in budget, you won't go over it, but you'll go over with your ten percent reserve. But you already have that twenty percent in prior, ten percent in last year's budget, and ten percent in the year before last budget. Y'all understand what I'm saying? The, the, the hundred thousand dollars has already been in two other budgets, it's not put back in this budget. The way the city budgets work, you gotta fund yourself every year, but you, the money for that project has already been set aside and not spent selecting some of your CDs. Y'all understand what I'm saying? So we need to go between now and the next council meeting, y'all need to tell me if I can move a hundred thousand dollars out of reserve. And I wouldn't move it, because you don't need it, other than to make the budget be right. The money's, the ten percent will cover what we're short, see what I'm saying? But you need to make the budget work, without taking something else away, you need to put that hundred thousand back in, that was already in two years ago, but, two year ago in your, last year, this year's budget, the money was in there for that. Okay? Garbage collection. What do you wanna cut? With our pay that we gave, boy, your income minus the ten percent is three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We're gonna cut that one employee, that'll almost get us there. Your expenses are three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which your total income for the year is three eighty-six, you're all right. But we were gonna cut that, I'll, I did not have that one employee cut out of that. I will take that one employee out if y'all wanna do it.
Well, three seventy-nine doesn't reflect any employee.
No, it just not, it's in the salary, but, all I did was put numbers in for what we wanted to do, and I didn't know what the total number was till I punched it out to come over here at six o'clock. Well, you take that, uh, I think you'll be all right if you do that, when you look at what that salary is.
Fifty-five pounds?
Yeah, fifty-five. So you take that out. That will put, that will make the budget balance.
Barely.
Barely, well, yeah. You took all the money from street and put it in city general, guys. Street fund's gonna be suffering from now on, it's gonna struggle to get by. You didn't do anything wrong, you just, we were trying to figure out a way to make city general balance, and we took money away from street to make it balance. Okay? We'll take that out and I have that corrected, everybody'll see, like I say, if y'all see anything else that needs to be corrected in this, in my opinion, it's not gonna hurt for you to call me and tell me to correct it, cause you're gonna have to vote on it. We need to vote on the final budget in December. We got till February?
February.
January is thirty-five, February is five.
But I'd rather do it in December, so we know what we're working in the budget. So if y'all call me and tell me, y'all, it won't be approved till the next council meeting, but if you call and tell me, we'll, if there's something else y'all say we need to do, we'll do, okay? Then the next one is water and sewer, that's gonna be a dynamic budget. And don't get all happy, cause you got a lot of money this year. You got quite a bit of money that's not being spent, because, remember, it's been two years now, we refinanced everything to get this water and sewer project started, it hasn't got started yet. So your income's set there to make those note payments, and you'll have those note, those big note payments right now. So it looks like we got a lot of profit next year. And you do, but you don't have, because you're collecting the income without the debt. Okay? So street looks real good. Any water?
Water.
I mean, well, water and sewer, excuse me. And the sewer project right there is the paperwork, it all got approved last week. The lawyer will probably be here, she may, hopefully she can be here for the December meeting to get the bond issue done, so they can bid the job. And Andy, or Karen and Andy are wanting the job to bid, because they bid Derrick's job last week, and it come in on our budget. There are several contractors that don't have work lined up for next year. When started this, our contractor's covered up, that's they haven't released any of the money. And Karen and Andy's, since they got this out approved, they'd like to get it out to bid before all the contractors. Karen and Andy, since they got this out approved, they'd like to get it out to bid before all the contractors. Cause right now, some of the contractors are hungry. And if it comes in under bid, we'll still use all the money, we'll just do more. We bid what we have money to bid and if it comes in under, we'll keep that money and do the next worst pot, if that makes any sense. I don't even know how that bid's gonna come in yet, so. And you put the water project in here too and you put the UV light in here too uh that we're looking for a grant on. All three of those are in this uh project, so that's why you're looking at twelve million dollars for the budget. Twelve million dollars income and eleven million outgoing. And then in this income and outgoing of this, you're looking, if you're looking at that, you're looking at the, the water project was what, three point seven five billion, if I'm remembering right.
Yeah.
And then the sewer project's four million. And that three point seven five million, they will fund three, three point seven five billion dollars to us. But then on the bond issue, and I don't know how this works, cause you got out a bond issue done before. The state will reimburse natural resource or seventy-five percent of that. And so, next year when you see this coming, and one thing I've got to do, if you look at this budget, there's a lot more in here than was on your budget last year. There's a lot more money in here because I went in and started picking up all the income that the water and sewer department brings in. For instance, it brings in money for the dog pound, it brings in money for real fire protection, that was not in the budget, but. I'm trying to get this thing to where we're totally transparent of what's coming in. Cause all I was putting in the budget was what was left for the. The sales taxes were in there, yes.
Don't forget about the mill, that's gonna change our dynamics.
It will, it won't change much of the income here, but.
It will change the dynamics over the long term though.
Now, the mill's gonna come back up someday.
Saying if we don't get it back open pretty quick.
It will, it, yeah. But uh. So, those projects.
How much water, do you remember off the top of your head how much water they went through out there?
Mill didn't use, wasn't a big customer. They were a big sewer customer.
They're big sewer.
They've paid a lot of people, they've paid a lot of bills, so.
The only good thing about the mill this time, when, then when Kurt had it, when Kurt had it, probably ninety percent of the people lived here. With this company, because they went through so many employees, probably forty percent of the people live here. And the rest of them live off. Does it hurt? Yeah, it's gonna hurt, but it's not gonna hurt you like it did because those, those employments is seventy miles away from here.
Yeah, I got you.
So, a lot of unemployment is, now, is it gonna hurt? Yeah, it's gonna hurt, but it's not gonna be like a total adjustment like it was when Kurt left.
Right, I got you. Well, when Kurt.
Unfortunately or fortunately.
When Kurt left, we lost here and Hamity both, you know.
Yeah, lost trucking company and all that, so.
And one time he was running three hundred trucks out of here and they had Alphabene was running, I think it's seven hundred trucks out of Hamity, him and Kurt.
That was a big deal.
Wasn't just me, I was just trucking.
But anyway, have y'all got any, so, and one more thing I need to get with Jason out, if you look at your financial statement and the water and sewer stuff. None of our bond money is in this budget and I will get that in there before, I didn't realize I didn't have all this other. If you look at from right here down, that wasn't in our budget. In water. It's expenses that were taken in and weren't put out, I put it in the budget now. It's an in and an out, but it wasn't showing in the budget. And the bond payments and all that are some in and some not. I gotta get with Jason, if you look on your financial sheet. I wanna be able to pass the water audit where everything's in the budget. We had to have that right in the general fund, but it's never been right in water. I'm not saying there's anything going on in it, it's just not all, it's not all been put in the budget. And I'm trying to go, and I wanna get Jason to help me see how to settle the bonds and notes up in there. He's got it in the financials right now.
Right.
It's not in my budget, so we're not hiding anything, it's in the financials already. And it's just not in the budget and I want it to be in the budget, so everything, when you're looking at the financials, this is different than this. And I want this and that, I'd really like this and that to be line for line exact as we get through. It's never been that way, but I'd like to get it that way. Have y'all got any questions on the water and sewer? The sewer project will go this year, we know, cause it got approved. I do not know, hopefully they're gonna, everything's at the health department on the water project and everything's at the highway department on the. You've had the third set of write-ups on the sewer project already, I mean, on the sidewalk project. It should be, they made them go back and put uh toe poles on every foot of sidewalk project, just like with the street. Just like it was been for highway jobs. So, the engineers had to go back and that's all done. They never have done that before, they just put a toe pole on what sidewalk, and made sidewalks also did, and they've had to match the street. It's matching the street now. Actually, it had, so they have to do a lot more design work on sidewalk projects than they ever had to do and that's what, one thing that held it up. And if you look at the, the difference in the incomes here, you got your income coming in for those projects, we're not as flush as it looks like we are. Cause none of the note payments, that four million dollar law gotta be paid back. And it's in there, but the, the income's, doing the projects in there, but the payments are not in there altogether, okay? Y'all got any other questions? I wanna talk to Jason, if you look at your financials with Brenda. Right now, in the water and sewer account, you've got about a million four sitting there, not drawing interest right now, but that's your operating capital. We moved some money out of that last year. And Brenda, you're saying three hundred thousand roughly moves in and out of that every month? I don't think they need a million four there, it's not drawing any CDs, I need to talk with Jason about that. I would like for y'all to vote on uh letting Jason uh get the CD and move some of that into a CD. There's no need to set it in the, in the account, checking account, if you don't need it all every month, we need to be drawing interest on it.
That's what y'all did last year, y'all moved some out. But moved it out in January, cause it was between you.
Y'all.
December and.
Y'all, if y'all vote for Jason to look at that number and see what he thinks he needs to move, I'll give you a break uh. Interest rate for us to move that in January, y'all make a motion so Jason can start working on that.
Oh, my God.
Alan?
Made a motion and. And Jimmy second, roll call.
Okay, Alan, Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
And he will bring that to you in December and move it, I guess, I don't know, he could, to me, Brenda, what do you want us to move before January?
Well, if you get it, it was confusing last year because they didn't get it paperwork done until the first January, but we were trying to move it. We were writing checks to move it in December, so it threw our, that's where it threw Jason off at the end of the year.
I'll talk with, I'll talk with him on that and we'll.
Cause he had.
See if we can get it through in December, you'll have the interest rates. If he gets the interest rates and has them, looked at them before then and we've, if we've, we've approved it for him to do the, the best interest rate.
That's January.
It's, that million four is in the operating cash. Of the water and sewer department. Everything comes into there and then it disperses out. But there's a million four sitting there right now that.
How much do you want him to move?
Well, I heard he moved seven hundred thousand, I'll thank you. I'd leave you seven hundred thousand operating on it.
Yeah, I move, move more than that, cause uh, a mil, a million at four percent is forty thousand a year. And forty thousand a year is roughly. Shoot, it's gonna be uh four thousand times three thousand.
Somebody's CDs are gonna have to start being used, but they're not right now.
It's gonna be roughly thirty-three hundred dollars, it's gonna be about a hundred dollars a day on a million dollars is what it's gonna be, so.
Y'all need, that would leave you four hundred thousand, Brenda.
It's gonna cost us three grand a month to let that money do nothing.
Seventeen thousand out of notes, two out of that, so we're moving three hundred thousand a month out of it to pay bills. And then seventeen thousand to pay notes, so I'm moving three hundred and seventeen out of that revenue into operation and maintenance to pay bills, so.
You might move nine hundred thousand, I'd be afraid to move a million.
Yeah, nine hundred thousand would be good.
I will need at least three hundred and seventeen thousand a month.
I'd leave, I'd leave four hundred in there. I mean, if we need to go get a CD out, it's not like they're not gonna be, we can go get them, but I mean. To me, the more of these we can get drawn, it's, we've done a good job on getting them done. It's helped the budget a lot this year, but anyway.
Yeah, I want them in several CDs so we don't have to move cash in the whole thing, that's how we did it one time.
He may do that, he may do that.
His first number of seven, we could do a seven and two.
Yeah.
Or lay on say, I was breaking them down.
Yeah, seven and a two and then.
Okay, we don't have.
So, I wouldn't have to bust up the big one. Yeah, but it has, it has helped us being smart with our money or the people.
Okay, the Steve Boyd contract is next on the agenda. We never voted on this, we told them what we was gonna do, this isn't anything but what we've already said we was gonna do, but Jason was, remember, Jason was supposed to go to us. He didn't get to us, so.
I read this thing, Billy, and the only thing that uh looks to be like we might change or might, it don't even have to be changed, just really, but. Contractor shall, item eight, uh contractor shall be required to have two large item pickups each year for the residential areas. Uh, with the date of such pickup being published in the local newspaper, not less than two weeks prior to the date of pickup. We might check off of that a little bit, everything's going social media and Facebook and that type of deal. And uh, we're getting pretty limited on our newspaper availability.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, we can let.
We're putting in my web.
We usually put it on this.
We are.
Right, but I'm just saying the contractor needs, it's gotta be in the newspaper, she gotta obviously find a newspaper, but that's getting a little bit harder to do now.
Yeah.
All right, this is something we voted on, but we didn't have anything in front of us to vote on, cause Jason was supposed to type it up and go it back to us. So, here it is, typed it up and got it back to us. This is actually approved for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven budget, cause this is what we agreed on, this is, this is what we've already agreed on.
But do you want to add this, put it on our webpage just?
We'll do that ourselves, right, the city can do that, that would be it.
Yeah, we've been doing that.
I just did one of them with Boxton.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not that we would box it, but somebody else might say, well, anyway, yeah.
Okay.
So, this right here, basically, if I remember the negotiations that he asked for X amount of dollars, we talked about it and we decided that we would give him what he wanted, but we would spread it out over a period of years.
Three years, yeah.
Yeah, and to keep us from being back in the same spot a year from now.
Twenty twenty-six is gonna increase four years and twenty twenty-seven is gonna increase three percent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
We raised him to eighteen thousand, twenty-five, he's getting, he's getting eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
He's getting eighteen thousand, six ninety-eight fifty-five this year. And then in the twenty-six budget, and that's in there, he would get a four percent raise and then, I mean. And then he'd get three percent in twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then he'd get a three-year contract with him.
Yeah.
So, I have a motion to accept.
You had lots of agreeing.
Yeah, for two more years. And he agreed on that already.
Yeah, I made the motion, we. Accept this as presented.
Okay, have a second?
Johnny, Jimmy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay, uh, who wants to read ordinance twenty-five oh one?
I'll read it. An ordinance from the city of Glenwood Pike County Arkansas to make purchases and provide services from business owned by Jason Linderman, city treasurer, recorder directly and indirectly. To declare an emergency for other purposes where it has been determined that the best interest to city Glenwood Pike County Arkansas. Purchased materials. What in the world, hang on. Directly from a business owned by the city treasurer, recorder specifically, Jason Linderman, Linderman County LLC. Whereas the city Glenwood is continuously and continually in need of all types of materials and services. Or conducting businesses for efficient operation of the city Glenwood departments, Glenwood Water and Sewer Departments and the like. Whereas the city Glenwood has previously purchased such materials and services or conducted business for Jason Linderman, Linderman County LLC, Glenwood Pike County Arkansas. Operating in part for Jason Linderman, tech, city treasurer, recorder, and whereas it has been determined that the best interest to the city Glenwood to be allowed to continue to purchase such materials and services for Jason Linderman, Linderman County LLC and Glenwood Pike County Arkansas. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of Glenwood, Arkansas. Section one from the, after this date, from and after this date, city Glenwood, Arkansas officials are authorized and empowered to purchase materials and services on behalf of the city Glenwood from owned and operated in part by Linderman County LLC, Glenwood Pike County Arkansas. Jason Linderman, city uh treasurer, recorder for as long as such materials and services we need from said Linderman County LLC.
Didn't have copy of the second page?
Yeah, second page.
Here's the second page, did you have a second page?
No.
Let me get some reading, would you really make me some copies of that, please?
Section two, that all ordinance is a partial ordinance in this complex here, air with, or hereby repeal the declaration of a part of this ordinance being all of which shall not serve or void any other part of the ordinance. Section three, it is necessary for the efficient operation of the city Glenwood, Arkansas. This ordinance is subject upon passage and publication, therefore an emergency is declared to exist. This ordinance is being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety and shall be enforced and effect from and after its passage to publication by the city Glenwood.
You were supposed to make a mercy, I have to read it.
What?
Both front and back, right?
Well, yeah. Just make the back copy and you have more back copies all they need, cause they've all got the front copy. So, make the back copy for. You got the front copy still, haven't?
We got this, this is the back.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty-five oh one.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Jimmy?
What the?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Jimmy, Johnny?
Yes.
All right.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I need to make a motion to forego the other readings.
Do the short reading of ordinance twenty-five oh one.
I might get motion.
A motion to do the short readings uh for the rest of them on ordinance twenty-five oh one, I have a second?
Yeah, I'll read.
Roll call.
Okay, Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny? Chris?
Yes.
Alan? Yes.
Okay, the short reading, you want us to just read the top part of this, I gotta read.
I will, ordinance number twenty-five oh one, an ordinance from the city of Glenwood Pike County Arkansas. Make purchases and provide services from a business owned by Jason Linderman. City treasurer slash recorder directly or indirectly to declare emergency and or other purposes.
I have a motion to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty-five oh one.
Yes.
Do you make a motion?
I might the motion.
You make a second?
Second.
Can I make a second?
Okay, Alan? Alan? Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Somebody read the short reading for ordinance twenty-five oh one, third time.
An ordinance number twenty-five oh one, an ordinance from the city of Glenwood Pike County Arkansas to make purchases and provide services from a business owned by Jason Linderman. City treasurer slash recorder directly or indirectly to declare emergency and for other purposes.
I have a motion to accept the third reading of ordinance twenty-five oh one.
Motion to accept.
Second?
Okay.
Roll call.
Alan?
Who's second?
Alan.
Alan, okay.
Alan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny, okay.
All right, sealed bids, I have two sealed bids on the truck up front. Have y'all looked, y'all know what truck's home?
Where are we advertising these trucks at?
That was not advertised, if y'all don't want to send it, you didn't have to.
They've been advertised on the webpage.
On our city webpage, they've been on there, well, I didn't know it. I should like to bid on some of them sometime.
We talked about last meeting, put them in there.
I went there last week.
I've not opened a bid, you wanna give a bid on a truck? Give it to me, I've not opened it.
What kind of truck is it?
Twenty twenty, hold on, I'll take it.
I've not opened a bid yet, you'll give a bid, you can give a bid.
Tell me where it is.
It's a pickup that's been tuned up to.
Yeah, Kevin did. Phenomenal job on it, I almost wish we wouldn't have put it out there.
It's a twenty, uh, two thousand seven Ford F-150, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, hundred and forty miles.
Runs like a top right now.
Yeah?
Kevin runs a little older.
He didn't think it'd out there. I didn't know, I thought it was on, on the deal. Thanks, sir.
Where's the one truck at the back?
Cause I'm gonna have two.
I need, that's okay, I can do it. I need to run it back for me. I need the front back for me, and I need, are you making a long front back? I need two of them, sorry, you're sorry. Is that it all?
I guess, definitely.
Can you run at the back?
Do they have one more there?
This is just, this backs here.
Yeah, that's just back, I got.
Okay, y'all sign that, two second round? All right, I've got three sale bids. Start up with nothing. Alan Moore, twelve hundred dollars. Ryan Brady, fifteen fifty-five. One thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. Miranda, five hundred dollars. Miranda, hurry.
Miranda, four hundred.
Looks like Ryan got it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, he did, was it Ryan or Alan, I think it's stay, Alan.
Ryan, Ryan Brady, R-Y-A-N Brady. One thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. Get a party.
Kevin? Evan said it's work, like that one, so.
Y'all, y'all can, y'all can draw the bids. Y'all accept the high bidder on that, I need a motion to accept high bidder on that, that's what you wanna do?
A motion to.
Accept Ryan Brady's bid, or reject all three bids, what are you gonna do?
It's going hard to replace anything that runs a drive for.
I need a motion, one way or another, you don't bother me with the way you do it.
I don't see where you have a motion to accept that.
Have a motion to accept Ryan Brady's bid at one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Have a second.
It runs good, you're saying?
I'll second, have a second. Roll call.
Johnny?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Alan?
No.
No.
Why does he even put it up there then, it's so good?
It wasn't, it wasn't till Kevin made it, made it work really good.
Well.
Wanted to have some coal packs out on it?
I don't know.
You taped it up pretty good, and what's good?
You're calm, man.
You're calm, man.
Honestly, the right thing to do, Billy, best I hate to admit it, is look their way.
He gotta vote our way, he gonna be.
No, but I'm just saying, Ryan, Ryan served up here, whatever.
He's not a bidder right now, if you want, unless you figure out a way to get more, I'll, I'll vote yes. Or the other one, we need to figure out a way to do a better job.
Did y'all put in there, y'all can accept or deny?
Yeah, it was in there, anyway, it's accepted, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we gonna pull those tires off of it.
All right. There's a bunch of money business, y'all need to approve each of these invoices, there's several of them. Uh, we're getting a lot of work done, RBS has come in here, and you've rebuilt uh three complete lift stations, and rebuilding lift station is not cheap, as you can see. So I need y'all to approve each of these RBS, RBIS invoices. There's money's in the budget, but it's nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, nineteen thousand dollars. It's a bunch of money. But, he's getting the jobs that DJ, TJ had started last, what, two years ago now, haven't got finished? This is the heavy part of these jobs. I mean, the, just like the industrial part of lift station, I thought that was gonna be, just put rails in, they pump that out, put new floor in it. The lift station out at Canyon Creek had to be replaced, it bottom was gone, top was gone. The lift station at the sawmill had to be completely tore out, and all stainless steel put back in it. And stainless steel, this is stainless steel feet, the, where the pumps going on there was eleven thousand dollars just for the two, what do you call it, Chris, where the pump slides on down?
Oh, the rails?
No, not the rails, the bottom piece.
Pump base?
Yeah.
The ba, wherever it goes on, those were fifty-five hundred dollars a piece to get all stainless.
That's where it actually, it seals off.
Because that, that station has ate everything up in, they still got on that station, they still gotta do electrical work on top.
All this was in the budget?
We're on the bill of budgets, all the budget. I need Washington Bridge, I'm gonna do that, and that thing, I don't care whether you want on the Mano, the Mano riser was up at the uh the three hundred and ninety-five dollars, and the city could put that rider on that before, remember, we put all those uh dog boxes at the water tanks? And the Mary Street tank needed an extension on it, and that's the extension, and you can get it at the ground level. The Mano was ordered, and it like, whatever that is, to come up to grade, and RBS brought it in when he bought that other tank in. And the city guy put that actually in, that was just a ring.
You, you're doing a much on it, it's going?
Yes, man, so this is twenty thousand, nineteen thousand dollars, was seventeen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand. And you got. Little difference, ready? And another nineteen thousand, and sixteen thousand. So you got a, I don't care if you all wanna do them all in one group, that's fine.
Kevin?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve RBS's, RBIS's invoices.
Do we have to name the receipts though?
Do you need the receipts thing, I don't need to.
If you make a motion and name these, each invoice.
You need the one zero zero nine dash zero zero five dash one.
Uh huh.
Okay, yes.
And one zero zero nine dash zero zero four.
Uh huh.
One zero zero nine dash zero zero five dash two. One zero zero nine dash zero zero five dash three. One zero zero nine dash zero zero eight dash one. And one zero zero nine dash zero zero seven dash one. How many rings told you it was working?
That's like a thousand dollars. That's our three bad lift stations, we've already put the pumps and all the other ones in there, these are the three we haven't touched. And these were more, in worse shape than the ones we rebuilt pump stations in. There's almost, I don't think there's a service lift station we haven't put the pumps in and completely rebuilt, that's all.
That'd be a grand total of ninety-two thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents for all city invoices.
Okay.
I have a motion to accept, you make a motion?
Do you second?
I'll second it.
Second, roll call.
Alan? Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny? Yes.
Now then. I'm still trying to figure out the pump motors at the water plant. So we are a little bit different, we bought forty motors. Guess what? The rebuilt motor that we bought when all this started, had pulled out and set in because it was leaking oil, it started leaking oil again. They're gonna fix it under warranty. I talked to Butterfield today, that's, is, the motor, remember, we bought one used and one used one, this is a used one that's still running. But they've had it out one time and took it back and thought they fixed it, we bought it back in, and it started leaking oil again. So we gotta pull it again, we've got the new motor up there. And we'll put it on and run it, and they're gonna take this motor back to the shop and go through it and see what's, I mean. We put this in, we put this motor in, took it out, put it back in, now it's gotta come back out. So just keep going forward, but we have Kyron bought us engineer.
Sounds to me like that shaft, is there a component that goes on that shaft?
Drop straight through the motor, is this, is the stainless steel, like a, all three of the bars?
Is it possible?
There's no right brass in the motor.
No. There's nothing out of balance that goes on that shaft, that's throwing themselves. Cause that's what it sounds like on the surface.
The two motors that, the last two motors that have burned completely, uh have over, no, they're jet, they're a hundred and twenty-five horse jet, uh.
But they're horizontals.
Yeah, and you have to drop the shaft down straight through the impeller, and then it bolts to the impeller, and then you gotta take a special tool, and it raises the impeller up off of it, and it spins with it.
But if you had something out of balance, like on the impeller, you know, you could throw it out after a little time.
That, the last two motors that have burned up have overheated. They keep saying they've overheated because we're doing something wrong, but they don't fail till you have a power surge, which, so I called Kyron, our engineer, and he got a specialty engineer up here, and uh.
Let me ask you one question, would it be possible to put another motor in the place, and you may have already done it, where that keeps, keeps throwing the shafts? Could you put another motor in that place and see if it threw that motor out too?
That motor's sitting on a different pump than it was sitting on the first one, yeah, it's already been done, cause we've already changed these motors out.
Well, it's gonna be a pump problem in it.
Then uh.
Motor problem in it.
So the engineer come up, I don't talk Kyron, I said Kyron? He don't like the motors you're using, he don't like your VFDs you're using, he don't like your lightning rush you're using, he don't like the phase monitor you're using. That's everything that's up there. I said Kyron, come on, man, everything, cause this is all put in by different people. And not, you know, the, the, oh, the automatic switch gear, he don't like them. So there's nothing left up there electrical, that this engineer, I said Kyron, give me an answer of what to do to try to start fixing. He wants to replace all of it, I said, everything up there?
Of course.
It's not all wrong, I said, this engineer needs to go fly a kite, because.
He's an engineer, he wants to.
Uh, everything in that building is not wrong, and all the other engineers that have designed this stuff and put it in last thirty years, all of a sudden, nothing up there is any good? I don't have an answer for where we're going on this, but I'm, it's frustrating, uh, and Butterfield come up today, and the VFD that's in there, a guy that he's, he's a member in a association, just like everybody else is, what are business you're doing? And the brand VFD we got is, the specialist is that brand VFD. These, the motor we're putting in right now can go from zero hertz, which is a dead stop, to thirty hertz, and run at thirty hertz, and it will run at about sixty-five hertz, which sixty's normal. But, they wanted to do that no more than five times an hour, and they want you to get to the zero to thirty hertz, and I've got, I gotta look at that list, like three minutes. We're not, we're, we're well past any of that, we're not, nothing in parameters that that motor we've got won't run. They do make a motor that's a lot more expensive, that's just strictly for VFDs, but this motor is rated for VFDs to run under, you gotta, you don't want, they don't wanna start over five times an hour, and they don't want it running under thirty hertz, well, we're not doing any of that. We're running right now, Howard runs for the plant to match the motor. Where his output, so when the pump kicks on, the pump stays running till the pump, plant's ready to kick off, we're running the motor at fifty-five hertz. Well within the parameter of everything. It's not starting but once an hour, and it starts and runs until the plant kicks off, and it makes out three, four hours, and the next pump will kick back on and run for I mean, it could run all day, because the plant, the plant, the water the plant makes is exactly what it can put out to the gallon at fifty-five hertz. So when the plant kicks on, the, it's not kicking off till the plant's full, so you can't. Somewhere we need to get to the bottom of the issue, because we can't afford four motors a year, twenty-six thousand dollars a piece. On motors that should be lasting twenty years. I don't know what the answer to it is, but I've gotta get with Kyron, I've been out the last two weeks, and I've gotta get that engineer come up while I was out of town, and I've gotta see what we gotta do, and the gentleman you bought the motor from's gonna get I don't know what could be set wrong in the VFD, they're.
The money we're spending on this motor could very well be the answer to our national thirty-eight trillion dollar debt.
I wish we could find out what's going on, but I need to keep spending money on that motor up there. But anyway.
How you doing? Jimmy, every week, we're trying to authorize another thousand worth of motor.
Well, you're offering, I mean, you, the water department budget has went over budget this year, because you put a hundred and fifty thousand over a motor in.
Yeah.
In one, I mean, it's two pumps, but it's the same problem. And I don't know what the answer to.
Are there anything up there that will protect tire surfaces?
We got it, we got phase monitor, now then, the engineer that RBS brought up, he bought another engineer, TJ, the other day.
And it's still providing order?
He thinks that you could put a phase monitor, a different phase monitor on, or another phase monitor on, that's a tighter tolerance than was, was the phase monitors that are in there were put in twenty-five years ago? They're the original ones that was in the switch, so twenty-five years ago, he said your new phase monitor is set closer. And uh, but the phase monitor, you're not shorting the motor out, it's burning up too hot. So it don't make any sense that, but we're dropping a leg of electricity when they're burning up, we know that, but they're saying that the motors are burning up because they're overheating. Just don't make sense, phase monitor, I'll trip that out if it's dropped a phase of electricity, I don't, I have no answer for what's going on, and I wished I did, because we need to quit figure out how to quit spending monies on up there, but they're thinking it may be something set wrong in the VFD. They're trying to blame the VFDs, because really and truthfully, the problem started when the VFD was put in.
Yeah.
Huh? But, I don't think that that's the.
Who put the VFD in?
TJ. And we're looking, I've got, the, Andy Butterfield is gonna get the specialist, that guy that he's talking to now is a specialist on that brand VFD. And I said, if I have to pay him to come out of Houston to come up here and look at and see if we got the parameters set right, then I'll pay him, I'm, we can't keep paying this money, I don't, but Andy said let him talk to them, he made, that, his son, Andy's son knows VFDs, and they took all the parameters that the VFDs are set on right now, they took all the parameters off up there today, and they're gonna take them, because that guy knows that motor, and that guy knows that VFD, and he's gonna look at the parameters we got set, see if we got something set wrong. I don't know. That's all I have right now, and I wanted y'all to know, I'm, we gotta pull that motor, we're probably gonna pull it out, uh, I talked to Robert. We can pull the motor, get the motor out, set the new motor on, and not wire it up, and not put the, drop the shaft in, let TJ come drop the shaft in. But he gotta drop the shaft in, pull the impeller back up, we'll let TJ and RBS's electrician come up and help wire it. But we, there's no need paying him to pull it, we, our guys can pull it and put the new motor in, we've done it so much, Robert can almost do it, Robert Howard could do it, I mean, they know what they're doing and pulling it.
And they can put a zipper on that thing, set it up right.
It's not fun getting that thing in and out of that door where that's gotta go in and out of, but anyway. Anything else y'all got? If not, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I missed it, first round. I'll second it.
Roll call.
Alan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny?